Does she reply? You've seen the microphone move. Mrs. Moriarty, can you do a microphone check for me?
Good evening, Mr. Parsons.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for bearing with us as we get things rolling again here for calling the meeting, the public session back to order. And we're going to start by doing the pledge of allegiance. Excellent. All right, it's 6:03. I'm going to open public comment. Mr. Parsons, I have the bright lights and big city in my eyes here. Do we have any comment online? Is there any person here physically here who would like to say anything? Okay, we're going to leave that open for a minimum of 30 minutes. So we have, this is a very exciting night. We have gotten stacked up with some recognitions. And I always like these because it's a time just to reflect a little bit on how many great things our students do here in the Interlake School District. So we have a number of awards. We're going to start out with the Scholastic Art Awards. And I think, is Mr. Quinn here? Mr. Quinn, if you'd come up, what we're going, oh, Chris Collins here too, great. You both are. Mr. Billings is going to fill in with me because we have so many kids that I'm going to just try to manage the names. And Mr. Billings is going to present the actual certificate of achievement. And if you would, students, if you would come up on either end of the stage to the center, if you come out here. That's, yeah, make sure you take them in the right order. First off, we'd like, we're doing the Scholastic Art Awards. And we're starting with Jaden Benoit. Jaden, are you here? Next up, and we have several students who had multiple awards, so we're only going to make you come up once. But Ben Busquet. Busquet? He's not here tonight. He got two awards. One for portfolio art and one for film and animation. I'll take those back here, Mark. Get these from me before you, please. Next up, Dominic Conforti. Dominic here? Lacrosse practice. Dominic got it for photography. Next up, we have Riker Cott. Got three awards. Riker got it. All, all three awards were for digital art. Nice job, Riker. Good job, Riker. Next up, with ceramics and glass, sculpture, ceramics and glass, and portfolio art, we have Hazel DeSori-Kay. Nice job. That one goes to, and so does this one. Next up, with his piece, Octopus in the Oblique, we have Digital Art Award for Brogan Donnelly. Good job, Brogan. Then for engraved in nature photography, Lucas Hurd. Way to go, Lucas. And then, I'm guessing it might be a relative, we have Jackson Hurd with his sculpture, The Other Side. Jackson's not here, Tim. And we have Photography, The Things That Go Unsaid, Gillian Keith. Not here. Then for a sculpture called Overgrowth, Augustus Marshall. And then we have somebody who won three different awards. Drawing and Illustration, Milkmaid's Lodge, Drawing and Illustration, Death Under the Tree, and then Portfolio Art, Connection. Kaitlyn, I'm sorry, I confused it. The first two is Annabelle Pendleton. Annabelle, are you here? She's not there. And then the Connection Portfolio Art was Kaitlyn Skodova. Hey, we have a lot of talented art pieces here. And Kaitlyn Skodova, I should have turned the page sooner. Kaitlyn Skodova got three other awards as well. Portfolio Art, Growing, Sculpture, Self-Abstraction, and then Sculpture Spaced Out. Well done, Kaitlyn. Thank you, Mike. You should have Autumn Sheehan in Mixed Media with Abigail, A Father's Joy. In the Photography category with a piece titled Autumn's Embrace, Tony Smith. Then we have somebody who won five awards. Connor South, are you here tonight? No? Well, Connor, let me just give you his achievements. He won an award for Photography with Bridle Vale Fails, Portfolio Art, Human Catalog, Photography in Thought, Photography, A Strange Glow, and Friendly Photography, Friendly Encounter. Five in total. Well done. And then the next gentleman got three awards. Photography, Deep Strategy, Photography, Sunset Dance, and Photography, Lovely Moments, Nolan Streeter. Nolan Streeter is also a baseball player. And then Painting, Portrait of My Brother, Allison Tishy. Is Allison here? Okay. And then we have Jamie Tucker, who got two Photography Awards. One for God's Painting and the other Future of the Not here. And last but not least, Lila Williams got a Gold Key Award for Ceramics and Glass, Land. Well done, Lila. That's the end of all the Photography. Thank you, Mr. Quinn and Mr. Stone. Thank you very much. Thank you, Kate. Yep, all set. So with that, I want to give a big shout out to Sarah Briggs in the Humiston office who helped organize all this. Ms. Dume, are you here? If you are, I know. Coming up up here. Um, next, we're going to get into the Nordic Ski Team. But first, I think the Nordic folks would like to come up and say something? Is that right? Do this first, okay. So the Middle School Girls Nordic Team, State Champions, which is and they are Elsa Bartlett, E. Cartier, Sidney Conklin, Oliver Dunn, Alana Everett, Grace Horsh, Aubrey Kimball, Emma Olden, Evie Page, Finley Palsgrove, and Alexandra Sprout. We have many of them here. Just asking. Yes, Sarah. Good job, Elsa. Way to go, B. B also led the Center Harbor Pledge of Allegiance of Town Meeting this year with her siblings. Is that everybody that's here? Yeah, turn them all down.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Elsa and we are, and I'm part of the Interlake Middle School Girls Nordic Team. We are incredibly honored to be here tonight. I want to take this opportunity to express our sincere gratitude for the support you have survived, provided for the team. This season has been an amazing journey ending in our victory at the state championships. This achievement would not have been possible without the opportunities and resources you've made available to us. We deeply appreciate the funding of equipment and access to the Laker Activity Bus, or as we know it, the Ski Bus. Your beliefs in our team have motivated us to work hard, push our limits, and ultimately achieve our goal. Nordic skiing has taught us so much about dedication, teamwork, and perseverance. We are proud to represent Interlake and are so grateful for the chance to pursue our passion. Thank you again for your continued support of our team and all the student athletes in our school. We are truly appreciative. Thank you.
Well done. Well done, Nordic Ski Team. And we have a little, another special achievement for the first place winner for the Middle School Girls Nordic Ski Skate Competition, Elsa Bartlett. Stop shuffling too much. And Elsa, why don't you just stay right here because you will also top 20, 25 meet of champions, take the top 20 in the state of New Hampshire, and two qualified, one was Elsa, which is this. And Ziva Patric. Way to go, Ziva. Well done, Nordic Ski Team. Our next recognition is Gymnastics for the New England Qualifier, Maya LeBrecq. Is Maya here? Oh. Yeah. Oh, she's more adept than, we are moving over to her. Surprised you didn't walk on your hands up here. Nice job, Maya. Hope you get better soon. Next up, Mrs. Lau, are you here? There you are. Thank you, Ms. Dume. And this recognition is computer related. In State Aspirations and National Aspirations in Computing Award, our own Danielle Cornelia. Danielle's here. Excellent. Well done. Thank you, Mrs. Lau. Mrs. Sullivan. Oh, I'm sorry, we had two for Danielle. Must be one state, one national. Mrs. Sullivan, are you here? Oh, great. If you could come down. And this is the Future Business Leaders of America that Mrs. Sullivan helps coach. If you would come down, Chris Bosanke. Bosanke? Bosanke? Chris, if you'd come down, we'd appreciate it. Tyler Coleman, are you here? Tyler's here. And Hayden Brunel. They all got it in sales presentation. That's Chris. Tyler, that's Tyler. And Hayden. In Economics. In Economics, Thea Wright. Yeah, he is. He is not here tonight. Give that right to Mrs. Wright. I'm Sullivan, sorry. In Financial Math, Aiden Price. There he is. Way to go, Aiden. In Networking Design, Sumner Mills. Well done, Sumner. He's my IT guy, personally. Does a good job. For Introduction to Event Planning, Kieran Donnelly and Landon Ambrose. Nice job. In Agribusiness, Garrett Hayward. And finally, in Advertising, is it Takeal or Tagal? Tagal or? Also at lacrosse. Very good. Well done, Futures, Future Business Leaders of America. Thank you, Mrs. Sullivan. Mr. Boucher, I saw you earlier. There you are. Come out, we're going to get into the Destination Imagination Presentations. Tim Hayman's 11th, 12th Grade Team, cut the credits, second place and Global Finals Qualifier, just a mere few points behind the first place. And Tim Hayman's team is Thea Wright. You're the next one. Hazel DeSori-Kay. We got Hazel. Is Katie? Katie's not here, right? She's not. Big night. And then we had Trish Parsons' 3rd Grade Team, Super Suss Among Us, first place and Global Finals Qualifier. And is Gilbert Cartier here? Is he like me? Zachary Currie, are you here? Are you Maya? Mia. Mia, sorry. Mia's here, this is Mia Greer. Zachary apparently is not here. And Madeline Larabee. Madeline, did I get that right? I did. All right. Thank you very much. Madeline's not here. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Oh, wait, maybe you're here. All right, I forgot all about this. So we also, not only do we have students, but we have staff who do great things here at Interlake. And I haven't seen, there's Amy Sheldon here. Amy, if you could please come up. And we, we are presenting her with an award that says, "In recognition of your outstanding dedication to mathematics, education, innovative teaching practices, and commitment to student success, your passion for learning inspires and empowers future generations." Thank you very much for your efforts. That's it for the awards. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Boucher. And then we have nothing formal this evening for this, but I do want to mention that we had one of our schools that was a finalist for the New Hampshire Excellence in Elementary Education. And our Sandwich Central School received, and this is a rare thing, they received a special recognition for recognition for excellence in personalized learning and community, which is quite an achievement unto itself. And we will be going down to receive the award in June, in the beginning of June. So thank you to all our students for all your efforts. It's nice to see it pay off the hard work and also to our staff, or one staff member. No, I mean to all staff. Thank you very much. All right, with that. Mr. Terriell, student update.
So this Friday and Saturday, the Wonko Play is happening here in the auditorium. There'll be one show Friday night and two shows Saturday afternoon. The Laker Bots competed at the New England District Championship this past weekend. We ended up finishing 12th and winning the team sustainability award, which focuses on the environmental impact that the team has, as well as the team that were able to sustain by bringing in seventh and eighth graders. This morning, the juniors took the SAT. The students should be able to get their scores back around early May. Quarter three ends this week and Combsy Recovery Day will be on Friday. And spring sports have begun, teams have started practicing, preparing for the competition season.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Terriell. Uh, next up, we have donations, Light It Up Lakers campaign, we have two donations, Melissa Cribby of Meredith Landing Real Estate, the amount of $346.66. And piping alloys, we've got a banner, the amount of $1,000. Would entertain a motion to approve the donations with gratitude.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, thank you. We have the annual school district meeting minutes. Which we've all had a chance to review, is anybody wants to move to approve the minutes? Moved and seconded. Uh, is there any comments or edits or anything we need to discuss? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, minutes are approved. Those minutes, now we're on to the March 18, 2025 regular school board meeting minutes.
So moved.
Moved by Duncan, second.
Second.
Seconded by Mark. Any comments or thoughts? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Next up, we have general operating expenses, Mrs. Dolph.
Thank you, and your packet is, sorry. Manifest 3022, I do just have one correction in the notes section for check number 113068, Light Speed Technologies. It does say audio system for auditorium, it's actually for classrooms, so I just wanted to note that correction. And I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has any, thank you.
Any questions or comments for Mrs. Dolph? Would entertain a motion to approve this? So moved and seconded, Ms. Starmer. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. All done. Next up, we have an enrollment report. Mrs. Moriarty, would you like to comment on the enrollment report?
Certainly, um, the report reflects the same number as last month, uh, however, there's been a few slight changes, but nothing, um, in terms of where the students are populated. But overall, our end number is the same.
Great, thank you, questions or comments on this? Okay, we'll move on. Uh, Mrs. Moriarty, a staffing update.
So, uh, there, the position for paraeducators shows a slight improvement, um, from last month, um, but other than that, um, we continue to be short one professional, uh, teaching position, which is, uh, the speech language pathologist.
Great, any other questions regarding staffing for the superintendent? All right. Year-to-date financial report, Mrs. Dolph.
And your packet on page 44 is the year-to-date financial report, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Forty-four, page forty-four. Any questions for Mrs. Dolph? All right, seeing none, we will move on. Next up, we have a strategic planning update, which the first strategic plan session was held.
So, uh, we, last Thursday evening, we had 47 people in attendance, um, 18 were parents' guardians, three were community members, uh, two were school board members, one was a Meredith Select Board member, one was a state representative, uh, there were 22 staff members present, um, of the staff members, five are also parents. Um, I only classified people into one group, so certainly, um, some people might also be community members, um, but it was our first, um, opportunity, there's another opportunity this week on Thursday evening, uh, six o'clock, Center Harbor Town Hall, uh, that we look forward to learning, uh, a few more, um, facilitation ideas from the last meeting to try to help things flow well. Um, really, this is a listening session for us to hear from stakeholders about, um, really, uh, hopes and dreams for the school district.
Great. Any other specific questions for the superintendent? Can you put your mic on, Jim?
Just, just around the, uh, notification there, I had heard some people feeling like they only come to their town session, that's not true, right, they can go anywhere.
Correct.
Okay.
And we did actually have people who left Thursday night that said they planned to go to all three.
Okay.
Um, you know, we were trying to get to all three communities, but people can go to as many sessions as they want and wherever they want, and I will be sending out a reminder to families tomorrow, and I, I will emphasize that.
Awesome, thank you.
Great, other questions or thoughts? All right. Hope we all see some of you in Center Harbor. Jim? Legislative meeting update, uh, we have gotten some nice feedback, I want to thank Mr. Twaddell and Ms. Starmer for reaching out to their local reps, and we've had some positive feedback, so we at least at this point have probably a handful of commitments. Um, we just need to be aware that, uh, this time of year, the legislature can change quickly, uh, because of bills that they're working on. Um, the other thing we included, uh, thanks to Mrs. Starmer's suggestion, is we did invite all the, um, select boards in the three towns as well, so, and Sarah is keeping track of the current list, so if you have a question of who is committed to coming, um, feel free to send her an email or give the office a call. Anything else you want to add, Mary? Okay. Great, and then we have a, we had request Senator Sheen for congressionally directed spending for intensive special education needs and contracted related service providers. Uh, we met with somebody from this Senator Sheen's office, they actually came to the elementary school, and I'll let Mary give the highlight.
Certainly, I'd like to, uh, thank Chair Hanson for attending, as well as we had, um, our Director of Student Services, Mrs. Holliday, uh, Mr. Boucher, principal, uh, we also had, uh, Kirby Corliss, Special Education Teacher, present as well, um, and Emily Hebron, our Student Services Coordinator, uh, so we had an opportunity to really try to bring our application to life, uh, to try to have, um, a greater understanding, uh, I think it was a positive, um, opportunity to keep it in the forefront, um, for Senator Sheen's office, and, uh, we will continue to circle back there, uh, so that we can keep that relationship, um, ongoing, as well as making sure that if there's any more that they need from us to be considered, that they, they know they have access to us.
Great, thank you. Any other comments or questions about that? Seeing none, food service update, Mrs. Dolph.
Thank you, um, Mrs. Moriarty and I decided to put this on the agenda, um, we just wanted to make the board aware that our financial position with our food service fund is not where we would hope it would be, um, and we just wanted to make you aware of that, um, I do have a meeting scheduled for next Monday with the food service company to review the financials, um, and I guess just providing the board with an update so that in a, there may be more conversations that we might need to have.
So you said, there may be, we may have to think about some funding issues.
Correct.
Any other questions for Mrs. Dolph regarding food service?
Go ahead, Ed. Mrs. Dolph, so if I recall correctly, we had some, some issues with, uh, billing issues last year, like, can you elaborate on that at all?
Sure, so, sure, so this would be different, um, the issues that we ran into last year were negative food service balances, this is the food service fund itself, so the revenue that we are generating is not being offset by our expenses. We're generating more expenses than we have revenue. Um, so, we may have to look at subsidizing some of that program.
Okay, thank you.
And that is not unique to InterLakes, that, um, is really been a statewide, uh, area of concern.
I just have a quick question on that, too, is that, I remember last year we had issues with, um, like, the payment, right, so collecting in our whole processing system and not knowing who was paying, is that, is that still an issue, or has that been solved? Is that?
So, we have definitely put a process in place, um, I would say collections have been difficult.
However, we're in a better position with collections than last year, the system is working, um, however, collecting the funds is a challenge.
Other questions? So, when we talk about collections, are we talking about collecting the last year's delinquent funds, or are we talking about?
No, the current year.
Okay. Did we ever resolve, forgive my short, merited, we resolved elections from last year, or?
We did.
Okay.
Other, Jim, did you have another question?
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on. In your packet, the last page is the end of school year schedule, I believe.
Yes, I would like to, uh, request that the school board consider, we've had two snow days, that the board allow the last day of school to stay, uh, June 20th, as was originally planned, and that the two remaining days become professional days for staff. Um, there is some training we would like to do on the Monday, so June 20th is a Friday, so that would be the last day for students, uh, the Monday, some training for staff, excuse me, followed by on Tuesday, an opportunity for staff to close out their responsibilities.
Questions or comments? Duncan, you have a comments?
I move the, uh, plan as presented by the.
Second.
Seconded by Jim. All right, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. All set.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have nominations. We have two nominations. Mrs. Moriarty, I believe that's your item. You're on mute.
My apologies, um, the board in non-public was presented the two individuals being nominated this evening, certainly if there are specific, um, questions that you have about each individual, uh, that would be a non-public, um, however, I am requesting that the board consider approving the two nominations, um, as presented.
So Nancy has moved the two nominations, seconded by Mark. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. Very good, we're all set, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, it is now 6:43. Mr. Parsons, do we have any, Mr. Parsons? You've heard the expression deer in headlights, this is board member in headlights, I'll tell you, those lights up there. You do not have anything. Do we have any members of the public here who would like to speak? All set? Uh, Mary?
Mr. Chair, if I can, just for the record, I'd like to, uh, just publicly congratulate our students and our staff on their accomplishments, and I'm sorry that illness, um, kept me away, uh, physically, but I, uh, very, very proud of all of our InterLakes students and staff on their achievements.
But, uh, Mrs. Moriarty, we appreciate you staying away, um, you can keep that to yourself. So I'm, I'm going to close public comment at 6:44. Um, we have an upcoming meeting on, oh, the strategic planning, as, as the superintendent said, this Thursday at Center Harbor, then we have sandwich next Tuesday, which is April 15th, tax day, and then our next regular school board meeting will be May 13th. And then there's an SAU meeting, uh, on May 20th. Okay, is there any other business? If not, we're gonna, would somebody like to make a motion to go back into non-public? By Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ed. Please poll the board members. Ed?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Nancy?
Mark?
Yes.
Charlie?
Yes.
I say yes.
Excellent. Thank you, folks, for coming tonight, we're heading into non-public.
Are we going to stay here, or are we going to go to this?
Mrs. Moriarty, do you have a plan for non-public?
Um, you can certainly go back to the room, or if, um, if it's possible to leave me up, um, without it being displayed elsewhere.
Uh, I will look to Mr. Parsons, are we secure here?
Yeah, yeah, we're on a recording right now, so we wouldn't want to end this meeting and then would have to start a whole new Google meeting.
Can we do that for the superintendent?
We could do anything for the superintendent and for the chair of the school board, Mr. Hanson, my question is, I'm not quite sure how long. Yeah, okay, yeah.
You know, if, if it's easier, we can easily go back, just walk back to the room and I can pull Mary up on my phone.
The only issue is typically when it comes to non-public, we would leave, and if this extends however long, like, we need to come in and end the meeting and, and take our equipment and stuff, we don't want to leave it open. So if you guys could be self-contained, I think that's the easiest.
Okay.
I don't want to.
Mary, are you okay with that?
Absolutely.
Okay, we're going to do that, we're going to go to our non-public in the conference, conference room B, right?
That is correct, and you'll need a badge to get down the hallway? All right, perfect, thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Moriarty.
Thank you.
Mr. Parsons and Mr. Cornelia, thank you very much for your efforts tonight, and congratulations, Mr. Cornelia, on your daughter.